I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Sort of for Tuesday, March second, two thousand and twenty-one. Beth, can you call it all, please?
Gary.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
David.
Here.
The formal will begin to proceed. Uh, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is going to be the consent agenda. What are the wishes on the board?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion, is there a second? No, second. We'll call Beth.
Chris.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Motion carried. We're going to move into the public hearing. Uh, the first public hearing we have is going to be the, uh, new industry application from AIC Energy. Um, I believe Doug is here from Beaufort Township. We have somebody from the school, too.
Mr. Schreiber is supposed to be up on the phone, but I didn't, not, I don't see his name, but I, there's a lot of code college.
Um, before we open that, Doug, do you want to come up to you, you, you're more than welcome to be part of it. You can have that, 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 that. We'll, uh, go ahead and open the public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're here for a new industry exemption application, uh, for AIC Energy Corp. Student District as SA Fuel X is located on MS thirteen dash oh one four four and MS nineteen dash oh oh one three in section five of Beaufort Township. For purposes of this meeting, we do have two additional, uh, members of the board for this hearings, but they are not voting. Mr. Doug Hoffman as a representative of Beaufort Township and Mr. Schreiber as representative of the school district if he is online. Um, so on, um, whatever. We did hold a committee meeting to hear the application for this new industry. It is a biofuel plant that is going next to the Sav- Savage Oil, uh, rail facility. Um, and I believe they are here discussing. Um, so we held a meeting on, the committee meeting was held on Friday, February fifth. And the, uh, the recommendation that came out of the committee for the application was to have a decreasing exemption on the true, true and full value of the structure from a hundred percent on years one and two, which is after they have started operations. So not during the construction phase, but after they have, have started, uh, operations. It would be a hundred percent for years one and two, seventy-five percent on year three, fifty percent on year four, and twenty-five percent year five, and fully assessed in year six. The land would stay non-exempt and would be a commercial value at that time, or throughout the whole thing. Uh, is that, yes. Is that about to?
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission and Steve. My name is Bill Davis. I'm a senior advisor with AIC Energy Corporation doing business at SA Fuel X. A couple of my colleagues are with me this morning, Brandon Cheats and Ellen Knutson. Both very instrumental to the support of this project. We appreciate the opportunity to be here today and have you give us consideration for a tax exemption request. In the wisdom of the legislature, they understood the high risks involved with these new adventures, using brand new technologies, and to encourage the development of renewable fuels in North Dakota and utilization of high-value crops in that process. So they determined that it was very, very important to provide the incentives to make that possible. So they granted agricultural processing entities the opportunity to receive a ten-year tax exemption. And so we're here today and we greatly appreciate the consideration that was given by the committee to request a five-year zero tax and starting in years six, seventy-five percent exemption, year seven, fifty, year eight, twenty-five percent. We're also here to explore in, uh, year three, the, uh, desire to provide, um, support for the school system. And that's something that's important to us and we're certainly open to negotiation on that as well. So we, we will be great corporate citizens. We will invest in the community. Uh, we plan to do housing for employees. We plan to work and support the community of Trenton. We're also very, uh, uh, interested in supporting other developing businesses, uh, that complement our operations as well. So those are all things, uh, to consider. Lower Yellowstone will need to expand its capacity. We'll be using very large amounts of, uh, electricity and natural gas. We will be accommodating and working, collaborating with Savage. So the job creation beyond our, our, uh, operations, some three hundred plus employees during the construction period and up to a hundred employees, uh, full-time when we're operational. Our commencement date is probably in November of two thousand and twenty-two. We hope to get construction going this summer and so, or early spring even. So we're here today to make that request and, uh, we greatly appreciate, uh, um, your consideration. And also, uh, if there's any questions, Brandon is here and Ellen is here as well to, to address those. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, is there any questions for him before you move on?
Uh, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Davis, if you or Brandon would just kind to explain to the public exactly what is this? Uh, what this facility is so they know, I guess, I think all of us up here know, Brandon is a marvelous job in the committee meeting of, uh, explaining to us, uh, what the details of this operation are. So I think it would be beneficial probably for the other commissioners to hear the same thing and the public say.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. With the, with that splendid job you said you get, I will turn the mic over to him. Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Brad Machines. I am the, uh, project manager for, uh, AIC Energy Corp. So, uh, I have day-to-day operations with our engineering firms and, and, uh, everybody that's involved in this process. So we are a, uh, second-generation biofuels drop-in replacement diesel fuel and jet fuel system. Meaning the government does not recognize any difference between our fuel and crude fuel, um, on the, um, diesel and jet fuel aspect. So we will be processing or utilizing canola, soybean, camelina, almost anything that produces some type of oil out of it. They can be crushed out of seed. Um, it's a very in-depth process, but very simple at the same time. So we don't have to change anything other than a computer program in our hydroreactors to process this fuel. So if we change feedstocks from soybean, canola, you know, market values to change as, as stuff moves along, we can help drive the price of, of soybean and, and canola in not only the United States market as well as, as the local market. So we're looking at about seventy million bushels of soybean, thirty million bushels of canola to operate this plant per year. Um, we do have future plans, uh, that, that, uh, hopefully we can get put together in, in a crushing operation, crush oil right here in, in Williams County and, and down right next to the refinery. Both plants are in the preliminary phase, but we are looking, looking to, uh, build that plant as well. So, uh, that job, that one is about another hundred job creation, so on, so forth. The refinery also has a, uh, about a four multiplier, four jobs added. So for every one job at the refinery, it's about four jobs that's either locally, nationally, um, directly related to this project. Um, we're in the, the technology selection right now. There's, there's, uh, there's a plethora of, of technology groups out there that, uh, offer a, a great program for us to partner with and work with. And it's a lifelong partnership. Um, we're looking, we're not looking at this plant to build it and sell it. We plan on operating it for as long as I'm hopefully around, so. Uh, if anybody has any questions, I would, uh, feel free to ask.
Uh, if there's any other question, Mr. Schreiber or, uh, Mr. Hoffman, both are, if, you can ask questions here, too, if you, if you would like. And if Mr. Schreiber's on the line, he can do the same. Uh, are there any other questions for Mr. Cheats?
I guess.
He's got to push the button, yeah.
Um, you talked about all the jobs and stuff that are coming in and the, I'm sure there'll be some housing and that type of stuff. Is there discussions you know in what would be the Trenton area for housing that would make it, would the big difference would be how it affects the school?
Correct. Yes, there, there is. I'm talking about how in, I know that there's a couple of projects that have been proposed down there and, and building. Um, i- i- it, it comes down to, uh, the, the water issue down in Trenton. Uh, there can't really be any expansions in the city of Trenton as it sits right now. We've talked to the water commissioner and, and, uh, there can't be really any expansion until the, the steward and the water systems are, are taking care of it.
Any other questions before we, uh, let Brandon go back to the seat? Thank you, uh, oh, uh, we'll, we'll get to the public comment in a second. We're, let's, let's let him finish and then we'll have the public comment come up soon as that's done. So if no more for Brandon, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now we'll go first call for, uh, um, questions from the public. And if you would, please come up to the mic and say your full name before asking a question. Did I jump ahead?
Well, I, am I?
You're right, you're right. I'm going to, I'm sorry, you, you, you should, I should have let you go first, Doug, I'm sorry. Uh, from, um, Doug Hoffman from, uh, Beaufort Township will go first and, and then I'll get the other guys, so.
Okay, um, I'm from Beaufort, representing Beaufort Township. And at the committee meeting, they didn't say that they came up with a recommendation, but of the recommendation, Beaufort Township was, uh, not in favor of giving any tax. Just so you know, that was our, um, opinion. And another, what I came away from, uh, a committee meeting was that, um, Beaufort Township has employees, it is, but no part of the final decision. And the county commission kind of gave me the impression that they don't want to give the overall impression that they're not in favor of giving tax breaks to bring in new industry. And I understand that. And Williams County is a big county and what Beaufort Township and Trenton School is, is just a small section of it. And once you come over the hill, it's, um, kind of separated from Williams County. We're on our own down there, kind of, obviously. And the big effect of this will be on the township and the school. And it's kind of where we don't know what's going to happen. It could, it most likely will bring a lot more traffic into the area, both rail traffic and truck traffic, which would affect the township. And obviously the school, there's no, um, no way of knowing how it's going to affect the school. If the school all of a sudden has another fifty students or twenty students or something, it's going to greatly affect how the school operates and what they have to, they have to put in temporary classrooms or something. It could affect them a lot in a hurry. Um, so just a thought, um, maybe would be possible to give the tax exemption, not give a tax exemption to the township and to the school, but get the county part of it. Uh, give them whatever, a hundred percent if you want, if it's not a big effect of you, affect you guys. Um, just a thought that maybe that would make both sides a little happier.
So, uh, I've been, uh, visiting with Karen, the legal counsel for the county about that. And there, there is an avenue that we could take, um, but it basically, we couldn't single off the school and the township. But, uh, there's avenues we could take to help that. And I guess when we get to that point that we can discuss the, the percentages and whatnot, too.
Okay, because it's obvious to me that, that it could have a great effect on the township and the school, whereas the rest of the, of the county, it wouldn't, you know what I mean? Although you represent us, we don't have a lot to say in it because we're such a small, especially, uh, numbers-wise, with such a small tech.
Darcy, you might want to explain or I'll start it. Uh, it's, I think it's also important for the public to know that the school district and the township are not going to lose any valuation on the land as it stands right now.
Correct.
If anything, they're going to gain.
Yeah.
Because the valuation of the property, once they start being, is going to go up.
Yep.
So the schools aren't losing anything and neither is the township.
Right. Currently, the, the land is assessed as ag properties, so it does have a very low value in, uh, comparison with a commercial valuation. So as soon as they break ground, um, if they break ground this summer, like they planned, next February, their land is going to be assessed as commercial instead of agricultural and we're going to see that in, influx of valuation. Also, the, while it is under construction, that partial construction phase, uh, first comes around and they're fifty percent. Then I assess them at fifty percent because it's, the exemption doesn't take effect until they are, um, operational.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Schreiber, are you on, on the call? It's not still star six one or whatever to mute. Uh, star six to unmute if you are not hearing anything, uh, believable. We'll move on to the public section of it. Uh, now you come up, sir, and introduce yourself and.
I'm Scott Stevens from G-Mac, and I have a question for Brandon. Uh, do you have a primary collective and how is bidding process going to be discussed?
We, we do not have a primary collective, you have M-E-C.
Talk to the mic, please.
Sorry. But we, we have an EVC, um, that, that our engineering company and they're out of Beaumont, Texas. Um, we have main engineers in Mandan and, and we're, we're not to the point where we're going to start bidding yet. We're hoping early, early summer here, we'll, we'll be able to get this thing moving. Um, and I'm not sure how the bid process is going to go out yet. We've got a couple of different options, so we're, we're working through the, the best way. Um, a- as we put it before, we, we're very close in North Dakota. We have over thirteen, uh, engineering companies and, uh, that have been aiding with this project. So as soon as we, we put it out for bid, we'll, we'll make sure that we, uh, get everybody that they has a chance at it, so. All right? Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that would, uh, like to speak on this? Third and final call for public to speak on the AIC Energy New Industry Application. So we're going to close the public hearings. And now we turn it over to the, uh, board to discuss.
Darcy, you wanted to clarify, uh, the kind of what Mr. Davis made as far as what the committee had recommended.
Yes.
So everybody knows exactly what it is.
Yes, so the, the exemption that was, uh, sent out by the, the committee was for one in two years at a hundred percent of the structure. Year three at seventy-five percent, year four at fifty percent, year five at twenty-five percent, and then six, year six, it would be completely assessed.
So I guess I, I too share, uh, Doug's concerns about the local township and the school because they will be the closest to the accident. So, um, I guess my thoughts were how could we, uh, you know, the, the county could take a hundred percent of, you know, the, the deduction of the tax valuation and how does the school and the township get some of that? But on discussion with Karen, basically it's like, uh, we can't single them out, but let's say we did a ninety percent, uh, deduction instead of a hundred percent. Uh, then the, then ten percent of that would be, would be collected. The county could take our portion and put into a separate account where we could hold that for the, both the school and the township to, um, maybe apply for those funds. So you would get your portion, uh, the county, or the school would get their portion, and the counties would be saved, uh, for the, both the township and the school to apply for, for special projects where they have to participate, road, did I say that right, Karen? Okay. Through a joint powers agreement, of course. So if that's something that we would entertain, but, um, do I, do I need some clarification? Did they ask for five years, uh, a hundred percent?
The, the original application was for ten years, a hundred percent.
Okay. So I, I mean, I'm, I would be open to discussing some negotiation on, do you, one, I think we need to know what would be the valuation that would be assessed. You know, like what would be the dollars collected if we did, uh, a ten percent, um, property tax or whatever you want to call it for the first two years? What dollars would that generate?
It would be about, I think about two and thirds. I don't have enough profit, can't do math in my head.
Well, it would be, wouldn't, this is Steve, wouldn't it be important, too, also to know the final, um, potential valuation of the project? Because I think that's a, um, that's a, that's a big number and it's something to know from a township and a school district perspective. Uh, it will be quite an impact on both of them.
So the, um, the estimated market value for this project, um, would, from the application, is three hundred and eighteen million dollars. Um, so the annual amount of tax would, in essence, be two million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. If it was at ten percent, it would be two hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. That's the tax bill.
At ten percent.
At ten percent.
So, Darcy, when, when, uh, that money, that, that two point nine roughly, um, how much of that, when it is at a hundred percent, will go to the school? And how much will go to Beaufort Township?
So approximately, um, of the total bill, five hundred thousand dollars goes to the county. So it would be, uh, two point four million dollars at a hundred percent. Um, assessed would go to the, between the school and the, um, the school and the township. So it would be two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars at ten percent.
Okay. Oh, that two point four, Darcy, I would assume based on majority that it's going to most likely go to the school.
Right, right. I don't have the, for a capital, I do.
Yeah, I think we had discussed in the committee meeting, it was right around two million dollars for the school.
Yeah.
Per year and, uh.
And, and the four hundred.
I guess just some of the discussion we had and then where we have kind of come up, uh, with, with some of the numbers, the recommendation from the committee was, uh, in order to get this in here, I mean, it's, it's, it's an important addition to, to the county. And, uh, if, there would be a school, a, a per student payment if, if, uh, things go, uh, if, if students go off, if people go up in Trenton. But I know it's, that's going to be difficult because they don't have the water down there to expand the system. So in, until that problem solved, I'm not positive you're going to gain an awful lot of people at the school. But the impact in two, three, four, five years is going to be huge on both, on both Beaufort Township, Williams County, and on the school. So that was kind of where we came up with the numbers.
But, uh, Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Steve.
Uh, just a quick question. What is the current annual budget for Beaufort Township and the current annual budget for the school? Do we know those numbers?
I do not, but Mr. Hoffman's sitting here, maybe he has an idea. I bet he does.
Well, the, it's changed since I was the business manager at the school a few years ago. It was about three million dollars of the total budget at that time. The township is about, it's, the budget's about a hundred thousand dollars. Little over that.
So this will have, this will have quite an impact.
I guess my comment about what the impact might be, um, would be quite an impact, too. Like within there, the issues now are kind of like the rail traffic and holding up the, like when it blocks off the railroad crossing. And on the roads that they kind of have an alternate, they have a, Savage has paved a little bit of road going into their place, but a lot of the oil traffic takes the gravel road coming in another direction that, um, like I say, it could run into a lot of money in a hurry. That same thing with the school, if all, all of a sudden the school is not big enough to handle the students and you have to start adding on, it gets to be a lot of money in a hurry. And it's, that's something we don't know, but a lot of what ifs turn out to be, and that's what happens.
Mr. Hoffman, did you have any kind of road agreement with Savage when they built their facility?
Um, I don't think, I think part of the conversation was, that was quite a year, quite a few years ago, and I wasn't part of the township at that time. And I attended some of the meetings, but, uh, no, I think they came in and they paved part of the road going into their, um, facility just for their own purposes. And they paid for part of it and I think the township did, but as getting a grant for somebody to do it.
Okay, and then how, how have they been as a, as a township, uh, citizen?
No, they've been good, no com, no complaints, except just that it changes the whole structure down there. When they first came in, we're talking about bringing this in, it was going to be a few small tanks and all of a sudden it just erupted into something that was way more than that. But, um, actually as far as citizens, they've been very good. They helped the school and put on clean, community cleanup stuff, so they've been good partners.
I would guess part of, part of, part of this is probably going to have to be leaning on, uh, North Dakota DOT for discussion about that Marley Crossing area. I mean, if we're, we're talking trains of seventy mil, a hundred million bushels of, uh, products coming in, um, it's going to substantially affect that rail traffic. So, I mean, I, I would encourage, somehow we have that discussion with DOT about overpass. I mean, the last few times, I'm not going to lie, I avoided driving eighteen oh four like the plague because it's between. because it's between truck traffic and vehicles, it's, it's awful. So, I mean, I feel you there too, so I don't know, as a county, we can figure out how we can discuss with them about highway projects too.
And also that highway fell apart back years ago and they redid it, and now it's already got big grooves in it. So, um, my guess is it's gonna fall apart again pretty quick, but that's all state, state highways.
Any other questions or comments or?
Brian, as you indicated, the committee was indicating that the majority of that product would go in and out by a rail, correct? Most of the stuff that would come into that plant would probably just be local farmers regular day.
Well, as much as we can, we can force locally, we will force locally, that'll, I mean, it's no different than any other harvest season, the roads get busy, trucks, trucks would continue to move, and we will purchase, uh, as much as we can locally. Um, but that, that, as I stated, a lot of it will come in, uh, via rail.
Cause we haven't really touched much on what the economic impact this facility would be for not only Williams County, but North, North Dakota, probably most likely Northeast Montana. And looking at your sheet to see that, you know, you're gonna have an estimated payroll alone of close to eight million, if not eight million. And, uh, annual revenue is anywhere from four hundred and forty to four hundred and seventy million dollars annually, and that's just the plant, that's not the crushing plant.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Sheets before you leave, one question, what's, what's the estimated amount of time after this facility would be up, you would be planning the crushing facility?
So, uh, well, as I said, we're in early phases of it, but i- if we can get everything put together, we'd like to come online a week before the plant, so it's producing oil for the plant.
So, I mean, your, your, your plan is the crushing facility will be operational once your, uh, once the refinery is operational.
Yeah, that, 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 as, like I said, as of right now, that's, that's our plan, but, uh, with COVID and everything else going on, getting some of these parts and pieces that are, it, you know, you're, you're sort of going from a long distance away to try and get stuff in, so, um, that is our tentative plan, but stuff can change, it might come online afterwards. Um, it will, you know, when we do get ready to bring that crushing plant on, we'll have to be buying beans well in advance of it. So we'll have silos out there that'll, um, we'll, we'll be buying beans well in advance.
Yep, no, thank you, that's, I mean, the concerns I'm getting from local farmers are, you know, it's a great plan, but if, you know, we still have to grow our canola and haul the Velva.
Correct.
You know, and then I assume that you'll be purchasing oil from Velva and training it over here or wherever it comes from. So the concern, and I'm, although I'm glad that that still stays in the state, I would prefer not to have to drive from here to Velva. I mean, a, a hundred acres of canola produces at almost ten trips of, semi-trips to Velva, so.
Right.
I would gladly do ten trips which, to your facility, which does bring in the question, you know, additional traffic. So, I mean, it, it needs to be a collaborative effort between us and the state to figure out how to fix that down there. There, uh, any other questions for Darcy, AIG, uh, anybody else, any other question? I guess if there's no other questions, do we have, uh, anybody who's, uh, interested in making a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've always believed that the commission, first of all, don't get me wrong, to the schools and the township, you know, we certainly believe and understand your concerns, but it's always been my belief that this, this commission, the decisions that they make needs to be based on us, best for Williams County as a whole. That's my opinion and, and, and my belief, so, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and, uh, approve or vote for the, uh, recommendation that was forwarded by the, uh, committee of a hundred percent years one and two, seventy-five percent year three, fifty percent year four, and twenty-five percent year five, and a hundred percent full valuation after year five.
So we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? We're motion and second, uh, any discussion from the board?
Just what, just one comment or, or question, um, uh, David, would you be open to using potentially reserve funds, still engaging in a, uh, a power, not a power of attorney, but the, um, um, Karen, help me out, what's the agreement we could enter into with the township and the school district?
What, what type of?
Joint Powers Agreement?
What type of joint powers are you talking about, Steve? What, what are you looking for?
Well, I, would we be able to, uh, a- address that concern right now along with the motion that we'd be willing to help them out if they had any severe impacts by leveraging some reserve funds potentially? Or maybe not even naming where we pull the funds from?
I, I'm, Steve, I'm certainly open to discussion in the future, but, you know, as far as the township, for instance, you know, they already have the ability to apply for frost law grants.
That's a good point.
And also the crew housing, uh, grants is the county issues. So, you know, I guess if their, their budget is, is, is going to, uh, increase by four hundred thousand dollars a year beginning in year six, uh, I think they'll be doing quite well, in my opinion.
Yeah, good point. I, I appreciate that.
Karen, why don't you go ahead?
Uh, yeah, if that's something that you're gonna do, that probably should be sort of like kind of a, a separate kind of thing rather than part of this motion.
Thank you.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Well, you got something? Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm also hesitant to say, well, I'm committed to providing, uh, overflow funds or some other fund in the county, you know, provided that there's some sort of a huge economic impact that they have to deal with. Um, you know, next year, two years from now, or three years from now. I mean, I, I guess if the potential is that they could collect two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the school, I mean, for, if, for two years, I certainly don't think in the numbers that they proposed of, of, uh, you know, four hundred some million dollars in revenue, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is out of the question to collect for the school district. So, I mean, I would be much more amiable at a ninety percent versus a hundred percent for the first two years.
Can we not enter this joint powers agreement if and when there is a problem? Do, do we need to do that now? And we do, we can do that if there is an issue in the future, correct?
Right.
That would be my opinion too, Barry.
Yeah, that, that's what I was just thinking, if, if.
As Mr. Hoffman stated, we don't know what's gonna happen.
No.
So, I, I guess rather than committing something today, let's wait till we see if something does happen and address it at that time.
So does that address if and when we still have any money that we could contribute to them if there is a problem? I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that we are the stewards of the taxpayer dollars, and we certainly would do our best to make sure we have revenues available, but, um, I mean, there's lots of needs, I, I guess I'm not in favor of the motion as stated, but that's my opinion. I mean, I would, I would certainly be in favor of a ninety percent tax structure for the first two years. That's my opinion. Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any further discussion? Yeah, can I get a roll call vote?
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
No.
David?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried.
As part of the application process, I do have to send a letter up, um, well, the commissioner has to send a letter to the state tax commissioner stating that we have granted this, and I would like a motion to have the chairman sign. The bike, sorry, right.
So, so we, uh, vice chair.
A letter to the.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second, motion and second and discussion. Roll call vote.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
I have to change the letter, cause it says Steve's name on it.
Okay, I'm used to that, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Darcy, thanks, everybody. Okay, now we're gonna move on to our second public hearing. Uh, this is a resolution of the Williams County Board of County Commissioners, Williams County, North Dakota, amending resolution twenty fourteen dash one imposing, uh, sales, use, and growth receipt tax of one percent under the Home Rule Charter of Williams County for the purpose of providing supplemental funding for public safety departments and agencies within the county. And amending the resolution twenty fifteen dash one dedicating fifty percent of the next county sales proceeds for the Williams County sales and use tax to the city of Williston. Public hearing is now open, is there any comments on this resolution, resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh two, dash oh two? Second call for any public comments on resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh two, oh two. Third and final call. Hearing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. And we're turning it over to the board, one of the witnesses of the board.
I would move to approve the, the resolution as presented.
And authorizing the vice chairman to sign?
Yes, thank you.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, now, under new business, we have the Williston Council on Aging Grant Request. And I see Representative Richter here to talk to us.
Good morning, I'm Mr. Chairman, member of the commission. Um, I'm the executive director of the Williston Council for Aging. Uh, what this request is for is last December, we were at a behavioral health meeting, and it was discovered that, uh, due to the COVID and the new restrictions, the VA was no longer allowed to give rides to veterans from place to place. So with Williston Council for Aging, we also run Northwest Dakota Public Transit. So what we did is we decided we would, um, punish rides to vets at no charge, um, within the city's limits. At this juncture, we're not going out of town because of restrictions put on us by local federal government. Um, I had a conversation with Commissioner Kemp about the possibility of funds being available to help us offset the costs of, uh, providing rides for the veterans. So what this proposal is, it's a request, it's been through the finance committee, is what we would do with the funding is we would provide free, free rides on public transit to all vets who qualify as seniors. Um, the request was for five thousand dollars. We're, we're funded pretty good by the federal government too for our rides. So at five thousand dollars, we typically charge three dollars for a ride inside. So at five thousand dollars, it will be approximately sixteen to seventeen hundred rides in the future, you know, going forward from this point forward. Um, and we would provide those rides to vets who are seniors, so falls within parameters of, of the guides. Um, like I said, it's already been through the finance committee, um, but I will stand for your questions you have on the request.
You got any questions for?
Chairman, I have just one question, Mr. Richter, do you, uh, is this, seeing this as an annual? The reason I ask is if it is, I guess maybe in my mind, if this gets approved, that we should request that Mr., uh, Carr's, uh, includes this in his budget every year.
Um, thank you. Uh, that's a little difficult, I know that within the VA itself, there are mechanisms to help with the funding that we just haven't, um, been able to explore yet and get the answers to. I really, in my mind, am not seeing it as, as being annual because I think the funding can be, at some juncture brought, brought in through the VA.
Okay.
I know that they will fund, uh, out of the, the big long trips, they do have funding for that, we're not doing those right now, but they, they, there is dollars available to provide the, the, like if they need to go to Partor or Bismarck or something, there can be funding made available through the VA for that. I'm seeing that right now just as a, a one time thing.
Great, any other questions, well, we got, uh, Mr. Richter up here?
I'd just a comment, I'd just like to thank him for, uh, thank Mr. Richter for, for coming forth and stepping up to the plate to, to help out our, our near and dear veterans.
I'm seeing you. Thank you.
I, I guess I agree, the only question I have, and maybe that's for the finance, where does that five thousand come from?
From the BS.
Okay, well, if there's not any other questions, uh, I can entertain a motion. I would make a motion to approve the WCA grant request. Motion, is there a second?
Five thousand?
Yes, five thousand dollars.
On the second half.
And I would assume we have to authorize the vice chairman to sign it. That's okay, yeah?
I'm gonna think.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion? Roll call please.
David?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, we're gonna get into planning and zoning, all righty, Sam, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioner, Sam Miller with county planning. Uh, first on the agenda, we are, our staffing staff has, uh, proposed an ordinance amendment to our twenty fifteen zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. This is simply updating, um, our current definition of subdivision to near the state's definition of subdivision. Um, we noticed an inconsistency with our regulations versus the state, so we're looking to address that.
Okay, any questions for Sam from the board? One of the wishes.
Make the motion to approve, Mr. Vice Chair.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call.
Gary?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have another ordinance amendment. Um, back at the December Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, a request for a church, uh, through a conditional use permit was, um, brought up by an applicant. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission had asked staff to explore removing that as a conditional use permit and having that as a permitted use in agricultural, rural residential, urban residential, public, uh, zoning districts. So this amendment would remove that as a conditional use permit, so not requiring them to go through the public hearing process, and it would just be allowable as a permitted use in those districts. Oh, sorry, as well as, um, urban commercial and rural commercial and existing small lot residential.
Any questions on that one? One of the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion, is there a second? Second. Motion and second.
Yes.
Second. Motion, is there any further discussion? Roll call please.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion carried.
Next on the agenda is LU dash zero two four nine dash two zero. Mr. Rinchma, he is the applicant. He's requesting a zone, zone change to rural residential for a eighteen acre lot. This property is currently zoned agricultural. Um, this, the only staff or planning and zoning recommendation was approval of this request with one condition, and that was to dispute here to Williams County zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations.
Is the applicant present? Or on the phone? Start quick to unmute.
Within your staff packet, there is a letter sent out, um, or that was received from North Dakota Department of Transportation. They just had a comment once, if development were to occur on this property, um, they just mentioned that this would have no adverse effect on the North Dakota Department of Transportation highways. Um, however, if because of this project, any work needs to be done on the highway right of way, appropriate permits and risk management documents will need to be obtained. So we'll just keep this in the file, so if any building permits were to hold, um, they would have to work with the VOD at that time.
I'd move to approve following planning and zoning recommendations and authorize the vice chair to sign.
There are motions. Do we have a second? Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Go call.
Steve.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes. Motion carried.
Next is LU dash zero 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 two dash two one. Mr. Lawrence is the applicant. He's requesting a conditional use permit for a home occupation within an existing home on a forty acre parcel. This property is zoned agricultural. Um, the applicant has informed staff that this home occupation would be for the purposes of obtaining an FFL, Federal Firearms License, and a manufacturer's license to sell firearms to perform gun setting and manufacturing. Uh, this business will primarily consist of internet, internet-based transactions. However, there may be the possibility for face-to-face, um, communication and pickup. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant did inform staff that the manufacturer license from ATF is necessary for even the smallest of modifications. So he said even placing a soap on a, a gun would require a manufacturer license, so there's not gonna be manufacturing guns involved. It's just gonna be for small hobby days, um, home occupation type operations. Um, there is, we did receive a letter of opposition. However, we spoke to, um, that, uh, citizen and it was pointing about that the opposition link, or it had more to do with the water feature on the property. So we had, um, asked Mr. Seidel, who was the citizen, to speak to the Water Resource Board because that was the more appropriate body to address that issue. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request calling, um, the two conditions, the clearance to our zoning ordinance and, uh, approval from all state and federal agencies when required.
Is the applicant present today? What are the wishes of the board?
I would make the motion to approve, following staff comments, and have the vice chair sign.
We have a motion? Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Go call Beth, please.
Bo.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Motion carried.
This next item is a re-subdivision of lot three of the Dean Junior subdivision. Which, uh, for our file, take is SP dash zero zero one two dash two one. Um, staff has reviewed the re-subdivision file and found that it meets the technical criteria to record. Um, so I'm just today looking for, uh, vice, or authorization for the vice chair to sign the flat prior to recording.
So what was your?
Is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Go call.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes. Motion carried.
The last item on planning's agenda is a minor subdivision of a re-subdivision of two fifteen block, um, MS thirteen dash zero zero four eight and MS thirteen dash zero zero five two. Same thing. This is, uh, a re-subdivision and staff has, uh, found that it's met all the technical criteria to be recorded and they just would, uh, need, um, authorization for the vice chairman to sign the flat prior to recording.
I'll make the motion to approve, Mr. Vice Chairman, and authorize the vice chairman to sign.
Motion. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Go call.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Now, we're gonna move on to communication.
Good morning. Um, before I move into the behavioral health grant items, uh, let's give you a quick update on where we are with the AV system project here in the commission in the regard to the streaming meeting. Um, so a couple meetings ago, um, we had the contract signed with our vendors, the South account, and video to come in and do the update. Um, we've solidified the order of equipment with them, so we're just waiting to get that in to be able to do a schedule of the hardware install. And from a software standpoint, um, we have that all kind of hooked up already between our new iCompass system and our new YouTube channel. Um, and our YouTube channel actually currently has the recordings from previous meetings so far this year. Um, so if people want to go back and watch meetings, they're able to do that through the process of getting those recordings here. Uh, we're still expecting sometime in the March, early April timeframe to have the equipment installed, um, and then the streaming up and running.
Perfect.
Okay, so it is in your own house. Um, now that the resolution has been adopted, so formally includes behavioral health in the definition of public safety for the use of those sales tax funds, uh, we can solidify the grant program itself and then go ahead and release the application. So what is in your package are some amendments to the program details. Some of them are language based. Uh, Karen and I cleaned up some things with regards to how the money would be dispersed. Um, but then otherwise, the individuals that are on the application have been outlined for you. So again, um, you all had appointed Steve Kemp as the commission representative, Sheriff Quandey, Holly Snelling, the director of our Human Service Zone, um, Travis Blackmeister from Tyoga Fire was selected to be the committee member, um, to represent the Public Safety Grant Committee. Uh, Alicia Oster is a licensed, um, social worker from Ray Public Schools, represents food district, and then myself. Um, one of the changes with that committee makeup as well, um, aside from the fact that I inadvertently created a committee of six people, um, I've also fielded a lot of questions about the program and would like to be a resource to applicants, so I've made myself a non-voting member. And again, the role of that committee is to simply provide recommendations to the commission about the application, and the commission has the ultimate decision-making authority. Uh, the timeline has been updated to reflect when the resolution was actually published in the newspaper, but also correct that a typo on the application due date, which is April, uh, um, I'm sorry, the application award date, which is April sixth, which coincides with your first meeting in April. Are there any questions about those updates that are made to the program details? So in that case, if those are okay with you all, um, I'd be looking for a motion to accept the amendment and authorization for the vice chairman to sign.
What was your?
I would make that motion.
We've come a long ways, about five years since we started talking about this, so Steve made a motion.
Steve just made a motion.
Follow that.
Sorry.
He, he jumped, he got in front of it, so, uh, Steve made a motion.
I'll second it. How's that?
Yep, and there's a second, second. Any discussion, uh, do you want to make that statement again, Steve?
I just wanted to say that, thank you, Lindsay. We have come a long ways in, uh, since initially discussing this, uh, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, looking back at the file over the weekend, uh, the file at home, I think it's about that thick that we started this, uh, four or five years ago, or when you started, probably before that. So thank you for, uh, taking over on this and, uh, leading us to where we are today.
Any other comer?
Yeah, I'd just, I would echo that. And Lindsay's really put a lot of work into this, and it's, uh, greatly appreciated.
Go call Beth.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The, the next thing in your packet is a copy of the application. Um, it includes instructions, um, background what the requirements are. Essentially, that's just copied over from the program grant details. And then the application itself, um, requires background information about the actual business, itemized grant request information, um, whether or not it will be expended over a multi-year period. Um, and then also including, um, how they anticipate to promote whatever services that they intend to increase at or enhance, um, because really the community awareness and citizen awareness about this is a really important part to people actually accessing services. And then, uh, a place for the, the committee to provide the recommendations and the ultimate signature. Was there anything you wanted to add or change in the application, um, for the program?
I think the application was so good. Uh, how are we going to promote and get this out to everybody so everyone knows about it?
Yeah, so, um, as soon as this meeting is over, a website will magically appear. Um, and so we'll have the, the grant application will be available through our website. Um, we'll do the normal announcements through our media channels and on social media. Um, there's also, um, we have direct contact of different providers up in the area that we've talked with over the past couple of years, so we'll put it out through their network. Um, also, on March the tenth, um, I'll be doing a luncheon run with the North Dakota Department of Human Services Behavioral Health Division. We'll be talking about how providers can leverage, um, the new nineteen fifty-nine Medicaid rules, how to become a community connect partner, and then I'll also be discussing, um, the great opportunity as well. Um, and so we've been able to leverage their network of contacts, um, through western office.
Mr. Hanson. Leave it. Man, I just said, isn't the world with technology wonderful? Because the word is already out.
It's great news. No, this is, this one idea is huge. Hey, I'm excited for it to be out. I just want everybody to know about it so they can get in here and get this opportunity.
More than a year.
Absolutely. You really don't need any action on that. You just want to know.
Not necessarily. Yep, just kind of this was our way of getting in.
Anybody else got anything about that? That could look good.
Okay.
Thanks, Lindsay. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And I really appreciate the help from the Finance Department and from Karen as well for making sure I'm not breaking rules. Good for her. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to emergency manager. Mike, are you on the phone?
Yep, I'm here.
Hey, you wanna go ahead and go over the, uh, it looks like the sub, the sublease is the first thing on there?
Okay, so the consent to sublease is actually from the city of Williston. Um, and it, um, gives us permission to sublease, um, the space on our tower to the northwest, the Northern Plains UAS test site, which is actually the, um, UND, uh, I don't remember if it's, North Dakota, University of North Dakota. Anyways, um, the city signed it, and I think it's on here just, uh, to be, uh, signed by you guys to let you know that it's okay for us to do number two.
Yeah, it's already signed, so.
Okay. Okay, so number two is the lease agreement between Williams County and the University of North Dakota.
Here comes Karen.
I am sorry, even though it's already signed, it wasn't signed with the approval of the Board of Counselors, so I just need you to gratify the signature of the vice chair on the consent. A motion to gratify the signature and approval of the consent.
I'll make that a motion, uh, Mrs. Proud, and I will also make a comment to Mr. Hanson and Miss Innes. I appreciate that you, uh, signed your signature so that we can read them.
You're welcome.
I tried. It doesn't always come out that way. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Go call.
Steve.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes. Motion carried. Now, we'll come back to you, Mike, on the UND lease, the drone project.
Okay, so this is a lease between Williams County and the University of North Dakota and the Northern Plains UAS test site to allow them to put an antenna, a radio antenna and equipment in our shelter that is, uh, going to be used by them as they are doing their, um, research and development of this new unmanned aerial, uh, services. And we've talked about this a couple of months ago. It's been worked out between all parties. Karen has approved it and just waiting for your signatures. And I would suggest that we lease, the lease would be at no cost to them for the, for the five years because the information from the research that we get and the technology we'll be gaining in the county will be of great use to us anyways. And they are, um, a college entity, and that's my recommendation.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Uh, any questions from the board? Anybody interested in making a motion?
So moved, miss. Oh, there's two there.
Yeah, I'm not sure what just happened there. Uh, we, uh, motion and second by the writers in the sky.
To the writers in the sky. Steve, your turn to make a motion.
Yeah, sorry. I was, uh, I would like to make that a motion and authorize.
And authorize. Go ahead.
Vice chair to sign. Yep.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Barry. Any discussion? Yeah, go call.
I don't know if I can outdo that one. Bo.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yeah.
Steve.
Yes.
Motion carried. I have a song stuck in my head, and I'll see. Thank you. Oh, yes, please, no on. Uh, Mike, you're gonna go on to the burn ban for twenty twenty-one?
Um, yes, sir. Um, so you have in front of you guys the, the burn ban for twenty twenty-one. It's actually a burn restriction. Um, it allows for burning in, when the fire index is, um, low or moderate, but it does put a restriction on burning when the, the, uh, burn index becomes high, very high or extreme, or there's a red flag warning. This is something that we've done every year, and you guys know this year we are very dry. We're, we're in a drought, um, in our location, and we just want to get ahead of things, uh, to, uh, make sure that we cut down on the large, uh, wildland fires and things like that. And I've, I've also attached the burn ban exceptions for, uh, farmers that can be approved if they meet all of the criteria that's on the, the paperwork there and their local fire chief signs off on it.
Yes, uh, the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank, thank you, Mike, for, for getting this on early. Uh, I know in the past sometimes we've gotten on a little later, so I like the fact that it's on and as dry as it is out there, it's, uh, it's really important to get this board out quick.
Does this have anything to do with that new law, I believe it was passed in the House or Senate that pertains to emergencies? Uh, that government entities can only do it for thirty days and then have to be renewed?
No, sir, this is, this is.
I'm mature.
Any other questions? Anything, a motion?
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the two thousand twenty-one fire emergency ban, automatic burn ban, and I'm afraid the very third one's fine.
You have a motion, a second, second. Motion is second, any discussion? Roll call.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes. Motion carried. Is that all you have, Mike?
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, finance, it's the.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have, can I take the last one?
Yeah.
I have two recommendations from the finance committee. Um, the first one is for, uh, twenty twenty-one county highway project. As you recall, we moved all the projects to the capital plan for twenty twenty-one until funding was available for twenty twenty-one projects. We determined that the amounts that are on the budget adjustment in your packet can be moved back onto live projects and it will be funded by the transfers as laid out on that budget adjustment sheet. Do you have any questions about those projects or amounts?
Uh, I would make a motion to move the funding to the work in progress or projects in progress?
Yes, we'll be moved to the actual twenty-one project.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Motion carried.
Okay, the second recommendation was for Richard Martin's facility. He, um, was working on a project, they're moving dispatch from the, from the second floor to the first floor at the L E C building. And when he picked the floor up, uh, the raised floor, there's an apartment underneath and it all kind of torn up and they needed to paint all the carpet. So he had some quotes there from Cell Carpet and Triangle Electric. And the finance committee made a recommendation to approve up to ten thousand dollars from the facility improvement. I just need your approval.
Is ten thousand enough?
Yeah, we asked our question and it seemed to say it would be.
Yeah, if you look at the two invoices he has, he figures out what he's gonna pay.
Can you relate? Maybe he's got other bucks.
And then he's moving the first, second floor, the other two to the first floor, from the first floor to the second floor. Second floor to the first, sorry.
This is the old dispatches on the second floor.
Yeah, it's just being removed, they can use it, so, yeah, I guess it's, uh, he's, uh, comfortable with those, uh, those numbers, that doesn't look that bad.
I'll make a motion to, uh, follow the recommendation of the finance committee and authorize approval.
The motion, is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mary?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yeah. Motion carried, is that it, Chris? Thank you. Dennis, you got anything for us on, uh, road update?
Uh, haven't heard anything on load levels, but they're coming soon. So.
Yeah.
I was just going on.
I called him yesterday. You said south went on today?
So, that's, it's close. Get on already. Um, so I'm asking to advertise for striking, uh, painting the pavement countywide. Advertise for this. We're looking to advertise for this.
Yeah, assuming you need a motion?
Please.
Yeah, so, so moved, authorized that. Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Roll call.
Please second, David. Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes. Motion carried.
Okay, and the next month, Dennis, we've got some repair work to do on County Route Six. Minor, minor major repairs on Six right by the center. Uh, Dan? With authorization to advertise for did on that also.
I would make that a motion.
Motion by Barry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bo, any discussion? Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Motion carried.